The regular notice requirement of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act has been complied with in that adequate advance notice of this meeting was given at least 48 minutes in advance. On June 20th and 21st, notice was mailed to the Curia Post in the Aldea. Notice is also posted on the bulletin board located by a reception desk at the central office in all school bulletin boards within the district. At this time, I request a roll call from the business administrator.
Good evening. Ms. Teresa Atwood.
Present.
Ms. Catherine Blackshear.
Yes.
Mr. Jose Brito Bueno. Ms. Dorothy Burley.
Present.
Ms. Joshua Cole.
Excused.
Ms. Taisha Manier.
Present.
Mr. Wasim Muhammad.
Present.
Mrs. Felicia Reyes Morton.
Here.
And Ms. Martha Wilson.
Present.
Also, I apologize. I should have also said that Mr. Josh Cole is excused as well as Mr. Brito Bueno from this meeting.
At this time, Madam President, we have a call.
Thank you. At this time, we'll stand and pledge allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and liberty and justice for all. At this time, I need a motion to go into closed session.
Second.
Board will now be going into closed sessions of matters of contract, personnel, student safety, real estate, and attorney-client privileges.
Roll call.
Roll call. Ms. Teresa Atwood.
Yes.
Ms. Catherine Blackshear. Yes. Ms. Dorothy Burley.
Yes.
Ms. Taisha Manier.
Yes.
And Mr. Wasim Muhammad.
Yes.
Mrs. Felicia Reyes Morton.
Yes.
And Ms. Martha Wilson.
Yes.
We will be in 45 minutes from this time for it into closed session. Thank you. Good evening.
We will now turn the meeting over to the business administrator.
Good evening. At this time, I call for a motion to come out of closed session.
So moved.
Second.
Second. Roll call, please. Ms. Teresa Atwood.
Yes.
Ms. Catherine Blackshear.
Yes.
Mr. Jose Brito Bueno. Ms. Dorothy Burley.
Present.
Yes.
Ms. Taisha Manier. Yes. Mr. Wasim Muhammad.
Yes.
And Ms. Felicia Reyes Morton.
Yes, ma'am.
And Ms. Martha Wilson.
Yes.
All in favor of coming out of closed session, please say yes. Thank you. We're now out of closed session.
At this time, we will now turn the meeting over to the superintendent, Mr. Paima Marhanofar.
All right, I'll be coming down to the podium. All right, good evening, everybody. So, we have some pretty important updates this evening, and excited to jump in. I want to begin by sharing out with you all some points of progress, as we recently had a State of Our Schools event, where we came together to discuss some of the progress we see, along with certainly an acknowledgement of the long road ahead. And so, I want to spend some time going over what we shared at that event, because I know a number of people here weren't able to attend. And then, I want to share some important updates on the Camden High School temporary facility plans, along with the committees that were recently set up. So, there's a lot to share with you, and a lot of this will be new information for even those who pay the closest attention to the school district. So, just to jump in, we don't have any new student board members to swear in today. So, I'm going to jump in with the Camden Commitment Progress Report, so the State of Our Schools. I'm just going to share some numbers with you all. I'm going to be pretty brief. And the headline, the theme is "Progress." And so, one way we see that progress is in student safety. Every single year, we survey our students, and what we have seen is that from 2013, at the time of my appointment, 39% of our students reported feeling safe in and around school, and that number is now up to 62%. When you look at renovation of buildings and new construction that is happening in Camden, you go back to 2013, and there was literally $0 assigned to new construction and significant renovation. And today, that number is $313 million. And so, that takes into account buildings like the Cape Cooper Norcross Building, Uncommon's on Haddon, State and River with Mastroi, and also, the biggest and most expensive of them all, the Camden High School, $133 million construction project. We're also renovating Bonzel School, East Camden Middle, and the list goes on. And so, that's $313 million more than we've seen before, and that's a big deal. Technology support. So, we track the number of days it takes to resolve issues. And so, back in 2014, at one point, we were averaging, and this is unacceptable, it was 41 days to resolve requests that were coming through our IT system. That number is now down to seven days. Chronic absenteeism, so we're jumping really across a number of different data points here, but chronic absenteeism has been one of the biggest challenges in Camden for a long time. And so, back in 2014 and 15, 38% of our students are chronically absent. And so, that means missing 10% of the school year or more, and that's 18 days or more. And we're chipping away at that. That's now down to 31%. And this is one of the bigger challenges we have. We don't expect a change overnight, but that's real progress. Truancy court, for those of you that are close to the work of a sort of justice, and making sure that, as educators, we're not just referring students and families to the juvenile justice system, into the system in general. And so, 36 court referrals back in September, November of just 2015, and now that number is down significantly. It's down to 20, and we'd like to get it down to zero. I've sat in on truancy court to observe what that experience is like for young people and for our parents, and it's appalling. And we don't want to put our students in that situation where families are fined, and in some cases, literally ridiculed before a big public audience. And so, there's a purpose for this process, and we want to ensure that students aren't being left behind, and parents understand what the expectations are, particularly for younger children. But the last thing we want to do is put our students into the system. Dual enrollment, so I believe a number of our student board representatives are participating in this. So, if you go back to the 2015-16 school year, we had zero students that were getting early college access. So, we created a new program now, where our high school students could apply in their junior year to go to Camden County College and begin taking college courses and begin getting college credit. And we now have 64 students that are doing that, and are on a fundamentally better trajectory as it relates to their college application status, showing up on campus prepared, getting college credit so they don't have to take remedial classes. There are so many benefits to this program, and grateful to Anna Sharak and Jardine Brown and her team, and others who have been spearheading this effort. Text alerts, I told you we're jumping all over the place here. So, text alerts, back in 2014 and 15, zero parents, grandparents, guardians, community members got regular text alerts from their schools, from the district, and that number is now up to 1,402 individuals. And if you're sitting in the audience right now, whether you passionately agree or disagree with things that are discussed and shared during board meetings, oh, we missed that slide. Where was that slide? What's the number that they text to get the alert? You text the word "yes" to the number, where's Brennan? There's no Brennan. We'll get back to you. If you want to sign up for our text alerts, we'll give you the number, so you can do that. I thought there was a slide that showed you how to do that. My apologies. All right. Home visit initiatives. So, this is one of, I believe, the most important initiatives happening in the school district. And in my mind, it is one of the most innovative initiatives happening in the country in K-12. And so often, the word "innovation" is attached to personalized learning, education technology advancement. I think innovation is addressing communities' needs in ways that haven't been seen before, and meeting families where they are. And so, the home visit initiative is focused on our most chronically absent students, and every week, showing up at those homes to provide holistic care for those families. And this is wraparound in nature, as we partnered with a healthcare organization called Camden Coalition of Healthcare Providers, and Center for Family Services. And deeply grateful to the people in our central office who are volunteering their time to do these home visits, beginning in January. I was a part of last year's small pilot of 13 students, and I partnered with one family, and I visited weekly. And so often, we talk about outside-of-classroom factors that impact student achievement. And everyone always nods their head when we say, "What happens outside the classroom matters." But very rarely do we actually say, "What are we doing about that?" And what is our responsibility to support our families who are in great need? And this is an initiative toward that end. And so, last year, as I mentioned, there were 13 students that we were supporting, and this year, that number is up to 200. And that is a really, really significant investment of time, of resources. And again, many people are volunteering their time to do this, and grateful for the school-based staff who are dedicating their time and efforts. Student transportation, so there are so many people in this room that deserve thanks to the advancement we've seen on student transportation. So, for the longest time, because this is the state law, if you live between 2 and 2.49 miles away from your school in high school, you do not receive transportation. You have to live at least 2.5 miles away or further, per state law, to receive that NJ Transit bus pass. And so, last year, zero students, high school students, that lived 2 to 2.49 miles, were getting that bus pass. Then, a number of community members, and I think the conversation may have even began here during our board meetings, we heard the stories of so many students that live 2.1 miles, 2.2 miles, 2.4 miles away from their high school, that don't have the ability to get to school outside of walking. And there was a community group called The Village that pulled together other community groups to do a walk called Walk 2.49 Miles, or Walk 2.4 Miles in the Shoes of Our Students. And I participated in that walk. I know a number of people in this room participated on that walk. And it was a lesson in empathy, and it's a really serious walk. We happened to do it on a warm day, and it was exhausting. And you can imagine now, as the weather's colder and it gets dark early, what that walk must be like for young people. And we learned something that day, and so, we basically moved some resources around in our budget, and now, 224 more high school students have that access, have that transportation bus pass they didn't have before. And that's in the order of hundreds of thousands of dollars that we invested there. And again, grateful to those who brought this issue to our attention, and we will continue to try to be as responsive on transportation issues as we can be, because we're not always perfect, and we're always trying to get better. Family-friendly enrollment, we've discussed this before. So, back two school years ago, or 2014-15 school year, we had 17 different applications. If you are a parent, you had to actually navigate to 17 different buildings and get 17 different applications with different timelines and different criteria. And now, there's only one application to be able to navigate the school system, and we've made life easier for families. Test scores, we've discussed this before with the park results, and within our traditional public schools, we see real progress. 120 more students proficient in math, and on ELA, 240 more students are proficient. And so, grateful to the hard work of our educators and the resilience of our kids to be able to see these outcomes. Here are a few pictures from the State of the Schools update that we had on Monday of last week, and you can see we had a couple student speakers. That's Josh Sims from Creative Arts. So, that's the quick update there. As part of that update, I want to also share with you what was probably the most important news we shared during that Monday press conference, and that is our graduation rate. And so, I know there are a lot of numbers on this slide here, but if you start up here with the dropout rate, back in 2012, the dropout rate was 21%. One out of five students was dropping out. That number is now down to 12%. So, it's about one out of 10 are dropping out. And so, that's a really significant improvement in our dropout rate. And so, I mean, students are staying longer in school, and their perseverance is paying off, because now you look at the graduation rate, back before this administration, was at 49%. And that number, as of Monday we announced this, is up to 70%, a 21 percentage point increase. And, you know, that's a testament of our students' hard work, our incredibly hard-working staff at our high schools, and certainly the preparation they receive leading up to high school. You know, what I'll say there is, we still have a lot of work to do, right? That number implies that still one out of three students aren't getting to the finish line, and so many of those students who are graduating from high school aren't showing up fully prepared on a college campus or aren't able to find meaningful employment. And so, clearly, we know there's work to do. At the same time, there's real progress. And so, the way I think about this is, we're starting to change the narrative about Camden schools, because for the longest time, the headlines in the newspapers said, "Fewer than half of students in Camden graduate." And they can't say that anymore. And we're changing that narrative slowly but surely. And so, just to close this out here, the gap between Camden and the rest of the state was at 1.37 percentage points, and for students with IP's was 36 percentage points. Now, that gap has decreased to 17 in 14. So, we're closing the gap with the rest of the state. There's so much work to be done, but the progress is certainly real. All right. Onto Camden High School, where we have some pretty significant updates to share with you all. And I think some of these updates may certainly generate comments during public commentary, and so, we're certainly eager to hear that feedback. So, starting with Camden High School, I just wanted to mention that, going back to our last board meeting, we heard from some of our Camden High students about some of the challenges that they were experiencing. And so, I shadowed Kyla and spent some time at Camden High School the following week. Ms. Anna Sharak, who oversees our high schools, has been spending a lot of time with our high school board reps, with our high school students, generally speaking. And we came out of that with a better understanding of what's playing out inside of that building, and we've been able to address some of those concerns. And so, I just want to let you all know that we did follow up on the questions and issues that were raised, and we'll continue to be as responsive as we can be. So, specifically, I would say what I saw was, the classrooms that I sat in with Kyla were adequately resourced, with, you know, the exception of the social studies class, where the issue was raised that some of the materials weren't updated. And we spent some time with Mr. Nell Throp, Mr. Nell Throp, who I observed him teaching a lesson about monopolies, and it was amazing, and I was inspired by him. And, you know, he told us that there are some materials that he would love to see updated, and we were able to move forward on it. And so, happy to have a more detailed conversation offline, but always helps to get that on-the-ground perspective. But I'll also say, spending basically three periods, four periods, whereas Ms. Sharak spent the entire day, the culture and climate at Camden High has dramatically improved from the year before. And I'll say that full stop, without any caveats, without any qualifications. Every classroom that I walked by, students were engaged. They were sitting, they're doing their work. And, you know, before, we would see sometimes some challenges with students wandering the hallways, and other issues that could play out. And I didn't see that. And so, grateful to the leaders and the staff there to see those improvements. Onto Camden High School committees. So, after reviewing applications from over 80 students, parents, alumni, community members, 42 people have been invited to participate in the Camden High School committees. I think we were waiting to hear back from one person, who I think may even be in the audience today, to confirm whether or not he's going to join, but everyone else has confirmed their participation. Excuse me, does this actually, does this represent the 42, or is this 36? It's 12, times 3, 30, yeah, 36, excuse me. 36 people have been invited. And so, nearly every individual is an alumni and/or Camden resident. I won't read all of their names off for you, but you can clearly see here. I believe that this group of individuals represents a wide variety of experiences and perspectives, and so, we'll have that diversity in thought, which we believe is important. And so, I would imagine that we're not going to necessarily agree on every last issue, which is a good thing, because we need to get some productive conflict out on the table as we have important and amicable conversations about what to do with the building, with temporary facilities, with the culture and history we want to honor, and the extracurricular activities. So, thank you to all the people who applied, every individual who took the time to apply. I'm sorry there weren't more spots available. Looking forward to moving forward with this group of 36, and I can assure you that for everyone else, there will be many, 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 many opportunities to weigh in at every turn. And I want to just quickly add, there is a 66-year spread represented in the committees. One individual graduated from the class of 1952, working alongside some of the students from the class of 2018. So, love that we have that diversity in thought and experience. I'll let you all guess who that individual is from the class of 52. We're grateful to have his participation. So, more to come there. Thank you all for, again, applying. All right. So, one of the bigger issues that the committees are going to weigh in on is temporary space. And so, today, I want to share with you all three proposed options on temporary space. And I want to make infinitely clear that this is the first time we're sharing it, and there will be many, 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 many more discussions to be had with each of these school communities, with other members of the Camden School community. And so, that does not mean that we are locked into any one of these three options. So, before I go over these three options, I want to share that, it's actually what I said during the last board meeting, what we heard from a number of different students, staff, and parents, is that there were two criteria that were very important. And so, I heard this, for example, from the Camden High PTO, and I also heard it from some students I spoke to when I visited Camden High School recently to sit down with students. One, that the school, the temporary facility should be in Parkside. We could, for instance, put the temporary facility on the other side of town, in Kramer Hill, wherever there may be an available building, but the location is important here. And we heard that Parkside, as a community, wants to rally around and support the school, and it creates ease in access when you think about students who are walking to school, they don't all of a sudden have a different route to school. So, it's kind of consistency there. And same with their bus routes. They don't have to change their bus routes, and same goes for staff. Secondly, we want to try and keep the school together. So, there are two academies, as you all know, at Camden High School. So, in theory, we could split the two academies apart, which is easier, because it's easier to find a smaller space than it is a bigger space. But what we heard, especially from the students, and from a lot of parents and community members, keep the kids and their relationships together. Same goes with the staff. There's a lot of cross-staff collaboration that happens. And so, it makes it a little bit more challenging, but we want to keep everyone together. So, as I'm sure you've already scanned through the options, let me just walk through them. The first is that the Hatch Building, which currently has Big Picture Learning Academy grade 6 to 12, that is the biggest building outside of Camden High in Parkside. It has an annex, the main building is quite large, there are three floors there. And again, they're grade 6 to 12, and they're approximately, you can see the enrollment here, there are approximately 300 students at Big Picture Learning Academy in Hatch. And the capacity of the building is far, far bigger than that. Option two, actually, let me just spend a moment on option one. So, clearly, one of the drawbacks here is that we would be sharing space to schools. So, you've got Camden High School and Big Picture Learning Academy. You've got multiple grade levels represented. And what, I want to make sure, for those of you that aren't close to Big Picture Learning Academy, they just moved there from the RIG Center. So, I want to be sensitive to their needs here, as I'm sure you all would as well. And so, given they just got situated, and now we would potentially be asking them to move around again within the same building to accommodate more students, and I think that presents them some challenges. So, that's just something for all of us to keep in mind. Option two is Forest Hill. So, Forest Hill, I know a number of you all know it well. Right now, the enrollment is very small. It's 200 students, grades K to 5. The classrooms are actually pretty big. So, Forest Hill, being the closest building to Camden High School, could actually take in the two academies. So, we've done the space analysis, and Camden High could move into Forest Hill if Forest Hill moves out. So, under this proposal, Forest Hill could go to the Hatch Building, and that would be an easier fit than Camden High into Hatch. And then, Camden High is in Forest Hill until the construction is done. What are the drawbacks there? So, for those of you that know Forest Hill, well, the building wasn't designed for high school students, right? So, you got that drawback. The hallways are narrow. The cafeteria, there's been some talk of trying to move it into the center in that circular room. So, potentially, we could do that. And then, where the cafeteria currently is, you could use that as a gym. But there's limited functionality. You don't have like a traditional basketball gym, you don't have some of the, like a big auditorium. You have a small auditorium, but you don't have kind of the traditional high school spaces. The School Development Authority will spend some money, if we go this direction, and add some of those amenities, and make sure science labs, so on and so forth, are adequate for high school students. So, those are some of the pros and the cons. It's close to Camden High School, the classrooms are actually quite big, and can accommodate older students. Hallways are narrow, don't have some of the same amenities as a high school building would. You know, Hatch is for older students, even though it's middle school, but it's different than Forest Hill, which is really for quite young kids. Third option actually goes against one of the criteria, and that's the RIG Center. So, that building is wide open right now, given MedEast, as it was known then, has moved out into the Hatch Building. It's not big enough for all of Camden High School. So, if you were to go with the RIG Center, you would need to move some Camden High students to another building. So, potentially, it could be at the Hatch Building, some students would be there, and then the rest of them would be at RIGS. So, let me just finish out, and then we'll take some questions. And I would actually encourage you all during public commentary, if you have additional comments and thoughts. So, the three decisions to come. So, locations for specialized CTE programs and alternative programs. Some of our specialized CTE programs need specialized spaces, and you're not going to find those specialized spaces at really any building in Parkside. And so, we would offer up those students opportunities to take those classes at Woodrow Wilson, and we build the new building, and those opportunities would then come back into Parkside with the new Camden High School building. Number two, the location of school-based youth services teen linking program and daycare facility, that will be fully accessible and operational to all students, but that location and planning is still being thought through internally, and we're going to share some ideas, once we're ready, with the committees and the rest of the community. And then, the location of Camden High indoor sports. So, the fields will still be accessible on Park Boulevard, but indoor spaces, we still have to think through, can we access ECDC's gym for certain practices? Could we use Hatch's facility for certain practices? Will we go to Rutgers for big basketball games? So, those details are still being fleshed out. But these are three potential options. We may hear from you tonight, and in future conversations, and a fourth, or a fifth, or a sixth option that we haven't thought through. And so, we're going to be open to that, because I see Mr. Barfle and others shaking their heads at all three of these options. So, look, we may hear something even better, and we are open to that feedback. And so, I want to have that discussion in public commentary and during our committee structures to come. All right. And I'm going to close out updates with Woodrow Wilson, because for those of you that work there, for those of you that have students there and care about Woodrow Wilson, just generally speaking, you know that over the past few weeks, there have been some ongoing challenges as it relates to student fighting, and some tensions that are falling across, as we understand it, we have all the facts, and I can't disclose some of the individual details here with student involvement, but they fall across racial and ethnic lines. And so, you know, I just want you to know that we have been spending a lot of time at Woodrow. We had a cultural sensitivity training for the staff, and we've heard feedback that it was a wonderful session, and they would like to have another session, because some of the teachers were double-booked and had to go to another training session and didn't get to go to cultural sensitivity. So, we're going to see what more support and training we can provide. Staff there, because it's a sensitive situation. For ELL student supports, we've now hired a bilingual lead educator who started this month. The special services team is offering dual-language professional development at Rutgers on the weekend, and I know a number of their teachers are doing that. I actually just spent an hour-long meeting yesterday, the day before, days are blended together, yesterday, with the Woodrow staff, hearing out, you know, where they are, and I can tell you that it significantly improved since these incidents first surfaced. We now have an in-school suspension room, which is led by the Dean of Culture and Climate, Coach Preston Brown, and that is a wonderful alternative to out-of-school suspension. And we're doing a lot of mediation meetings with parents and with students to be more proactive about some of the incidents, about some of the fighting that has played out there. All right. So, I'm going to just close out with some district highlights, and we'll come back up on stage. So, I mentioned Josh Sims's name. For those of you that haven't heard this, Josh, who is a student board rep, applied early action to Cornell University and was accepted to Cornell University. Josh, and those of you that know him, you won't be surprised by this statement, and he's one of the most inspiring people I have ever, ever... he's one of the most inspiring people I have ever, ever spent time with. And, he's one of the, he's just an incredible independent thinker, who asks tough questions and makes insightful observations on a level that some of our elected officials in Washington, DC can't operate on. And so, there's no question in my mind that we'll all be hearing from Josh back here in Camden at some point down the future, and he's going to be doing big, big, big things down the road. He's an incredible, incredible kid. So when you see him, congratulate him. And congrats to the creative arts staff who allowed, gave him all the support to get to this place. These are the Sharp Scholars, celebrating their commitments to math excellence. So this is for grades, starting with the sixth grade. And these students spend 60 minutes a week on individual and online mathematics instruction, provided by Think Through Math, which is one of our, which is our main blended learning partner for grades K to eight. And so we just wanted to celebrate these students. And a huge thanks to this staff at Sharp. She, yeah, I'm glad you said that, Gary. So, Ildiana Martinez, seventh grader in Ms. Adams's class, I skipped over this part of my notes. And she got the, she was a top performer in Think Through Math in her grade across the entire state of New Jersey. Gary, if you want to come up and finish out the rest of this presentation, you're welcome to. All right. So, and by the way, she reached out to us to brag about her score. She emailed Ms. McCombs to tell us about her score. So it's kind of an amazing thing. We did a parent listening tour. This is the most recent round, as you know, we do a lot of these. This is, I think, pictures from the 77th, or 78th public meeting we've had now in the past three and a half years. And so, thank you to Brendan, and Sheree, and Maida, and many others, who worked late evenings to sit down with students and staff from across the city. We spoke to more than 150 residents to get their honest feedback. And the main findings of this listening tour are on the flyer that you should have received as you were walking in. And, you know, they, those, you know, those comments and those insights from our community members are consistent with the conversation we've been having here, which is, I think a lot of community members and parents see the progress, and at the same time, there's a lot of work that they're telling us we need to be doing, especially when we think about special education and bilingual supports. We've got our work cut out for us, and appreciate the open and honest feedback that we've been Big, big shout-out here to Maisha Arline, to Ms. Faida, to Ms. Monique Ragsdale, and others who I'm probably forgetting, to spearhead our students, a large number of students, about 80 high school students visiting the National Museum of African American History and Culture, which is an unbelievable experience. And for those of you that know about the museum which recently opened, let's give them a round of applause. So we were more than happy to support this initiative. And I was hoping to join on the field trip, but my staff told me I had to stay in Camden and attend to some other meetings. But, you know, this is such a big deal, for those of you that know this museum, it just opened, there's literally a waiting list to be able to get in. And so, just to walk in, there's a waiting list. And, so grateful that these caring group of adults pulled our kids together and took them down there, and to have an important conversation about race and history in our country. I feel like every board meeting, we give you the latest chapter of the BRIM work with future vets. So shout-out again to Ms. Karen Barelli-Luke for her work and others at BRIM. And so these are some pictures from the students visiting the University of Pennsylvania School of Veterinary Medicine, and the experience these students have had. I've spoken to some of their parents. They're just over the moon, and really, really, really grateful to the staff there for all the work they're doing. The PACER program, I always forget what PACER stands for, Police in Congress Engaging in Reading? I think that's what it stands for. So it's a partnership with Camden County Police Department to spend more time with our students. And we've now expanded this program, we're now in our third year, and we've expanded the program to four new district schools, and those schools are Cream, Forest Hill, Sumner, and Molina. So big thanks to Camden County Police Department and our staff there for the partnership. All right. I believe we're nearing the end now. There were about 10 text alerts sent for the Family Math and Literacy Night. So if you get those text alerts, you probably knew about the Family Math and Literacy Night. Huge turnout at a number of schools. I think we had some bad luck with weather, but even with the bad weather, there was wonderful turnout. Here are some, some of the pictures at H.P. Wilson, where over 60 families showed up. And the readings, they played games, they played literacy games and math games, and I heard from so many different parents that the games were incredibly engaging, and they kept them and are using them with their kids at home. All right. Three Kings Day, January the 5th, at the Dudley School, there's going to be, and this has been going on for a long time now, a big annual celebration for Three Kings Day. So that's on Thursday, January the 5th. And every year I've gone, there's just been standing room only, and look forward to seeing everyone there. And that concludes the superintendent's report. And we have a number of retirees, and Ms., our Vice President, Reyes Morton, will read this off on stage. Thank you.
Okay. So I'd just like to say thank you to those who retired. You, thank you for all of your service and commitment to our youth, to our families. You're always welcome here with open arms, shall you be interested in any certain initiative? And so I will read down, and again, thank you for your service. Diane Ashton, 22 years, Darwin Branch, 18 years. Colleen Francis Tensley, 32 years. Eleonora Grominga, 26 years. Constance Johnson, 24 years. Kathy Levin, 25 years. Karen Loveland, 24 years. Deborah Mims, 33 years. Germaa Paulos, 10 years. Magdalia Salonell, 30 years. Kathleen Stambolian, 25 years. Nina Thomas, 25 years. So again, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Reyes Morton. At this time, I would just like to speak a little bit about tonight's superintendent's report. In reading this report this month, I can say to you that, for the first time in a long time, I'm excited about what I see presented to us. I first like to thank our chief staff, Ms. Ona May, because she's the person who's at the helm when it comes to working with the team that the superintendent has here in the district. And I can tell the difference, and know the difference, since she's come on board, and the type of programs that have been put together, and the things that we are now receiving. For this month, I can say to you, after being on this board for 17 years, that I see programs for students. I see programs for special needs students. I see programs that will help our children. They go to workshops, and they will be able to go and work along with the teachers that are taking them to these programs and workshops, where they're getting training, not only on a state level, but the national level. We should be excited about that, because those are the type of things that our children, we need to give them exposures, not only in the city of Camden, but outside of it. I am watching, and I see the type of data systems that we have asked for as a board, sitting at this table, that we ask other business administrators to say, "We need this," to be able to track the data, for accountability and transparency, to make sure that we continue to get the funding coming into the school district on behalf of our children. I see PD put in for our teachers through Title II. I see programs put in for our English language learners, who is Title III. And I watch money for at-risk students being identified for our students in Title I. Those are the type of programs that we should be seeing. It should be for our children, it should be for our staff, in order to help them through professional development, these are the things that our staff is entitled to. So this is what we've been looking for. I, as a board member, sitting at this table this evening, I'm very excited about the future to come, if we continue on this track. We can already see, from the superintendent's report this evening, we're already moving in the right direction. And being a part of the meeting at the State Department of Education, they are looking at us, and they are supporting us. They said, whatever it is that we may need to make a difference in our city for our children, that they're here to help to support us. So I would say to you tonight, kudos to Superintendent Paymon Rahaford and his team for the work that they are doing on behalf of our children and our staff in the city.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson. Appreciate that, and we really do have an incredible team, and grateful for the progress we've made, and we still have a long ways to go, as you acknowledged, and I appreciate those kind of words. I know that our student board members, their bus is leaving in about 20, 25 minutes, so I want to pivot over to them, and then if there are others that want to respond to Ms. Wilson's, we'll come right back. So I'll hand it over now to our student board reps.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Kyla Evans. I'm a 12th grader in Camden High School. I represent the D building. I would like to point out the positives that Camden High has. At the previous board meeting, we brought up the lack of textbooks. Ms. Anna was persistent in helping us get the materials we needed for some classes, the work is still in progress. We also were able to resolve the situation with the lack of teachers. It's only temporarily, but it's doing what needs to be done. We now have a chemistry teacher and a French teacher, I believe it was, a French teacher. My only concern, right now, just right now, is our technology is outdated, and we, a lot of our work is computerized, and we don't have enough computers, or computers that work for us to do our work. So I'm hoping we can do something about that. Thank you.
Thanks, Kyla.
Hello, my name is Evan Coleman, and I'm a junior at BRIM Medical Arts. The strength areas in my school are the activities in the school store. So we have like, for juniors, it's a co-program, and it's more so, we're not graded for it, and it's more so dealing with the mental health aspect of the health triangle. And the freshmen have a bridge program, where it's to make them like outspoken. The school store is just like a little convenience store during our lunch periods, and we get to like buy snacks, pens, pencils, papers, anything convenient. Our one area of concern would be for the seniors to work co-op into their schedules, so that they can like work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Esmeralde Peña. I'm also a junior at BRIM Medical Arts. And, there are many positive things going on in our school. Among them is, we have a buddy system in place for the seniors, in which each teacher is assigned two seniors, so that they could help them with their college application, and make sure they're on track, and reduce the stress that goes along with this important phase in their life, which also goes to show our supportive teachers at our school, and how community-filled it is. It's a very small school, so it's very community, family-oriented. We are also very happy with, we have more activities, like, we were shown at the Shao Hound with our pets, and we, we have more volunteer opportunities, and we're excited about that. Also, today, we were told that we will have a science fair in our school from February to April, to which we will be working on. And we will be working with like a freshman, sophomore, juniors, and seniors, in which it will allow us to get to know the underclassmen more, and even the upperclassmen. So, something that I'm looking forward to working with the superintendent will be that we need to find a teacher for the math, for the freshmen, and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Representing for the underclassmen.
So any other questions or comments from board members?
Paymon, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Wilson. Thank you, Paymon. This is exciting tonight. There were so many awesome highlights. And I think it's important that we understand, you know, the achievements that have been going on within the last six years. We have graduation rate increased by 20%, the first time in three decades that this school district has seen. And that is just exceptional. We have, you know, parent engagement, and 1,400 texts being received by families in homes throughout the city, in which three years ago were zero. We have over 300 million dollars of investment into this Camden City School District, and that's, everything is starting from the Renaissance to the Camden High, that we're, we've just pre-shown a little while ago. And so, I mean, it's exciting. We've touched everything from parent advocacy, to empowering students academically, with now they're allowing to take college credits. That's awesome. And supporting the staff more efficiently with the tech support, you know, it speaks a lot to the volumes of operations, and how it's increased, and how it's been more efficient. And so, you know, parents, educators, staff, and community groups continue to collaborate on investing in the children's future, and engaging parents through this process, and this is the only way that we can move forward together, and making sure that we are supporting the needs of our youth, our students, and our families. And we want to thank you for your hard work and dedication. Paymon, thank you, and your, and your staff. You know, this is a good six years of work, and today was like a snapshot of everything. And it's very humbling and exciting to be here. There are so many different moving parts that happen every day, every year, throughout the months. And so, in the midst of all that, there's, we're still highlighted, whether it be good or bad. And for the superintendent and his staff to always be spearheading the mission of keeping our youth and our families first and priority, speaks volumes of your progress, and so I want to thank you for that.
Thank you for your partnership.
Mm-hmm.
It's my turn.
It's my turn.
Mr. Paymon, at the time, you was going to give out the text number. Can you give it out now?
Yeah, I can. All right. So if you want to be on our text alert distribution list, you text "yes" to 67587. 67587. Just text the word "yes." 67587. You're welcome.
Okay. We will now turn this portion of the meeting over to the business administrator.
Good evening. At this time, I ask for approval for the bill list, resolution numbers 1 through 12, and the financial report.
In accordance with the powers vested in the state district superintendent under Title 18A, I hereby approve today's superintendent's agenda items and business office agenda items. And to our board members, I've spoken to many of you one-on-one in passing, as we bump into each other regularly. Certainly keep the feedback coming on the Camden High temporary facilities. If you have any specific thoughts on each of those three options, or additional options, I know Ms. Wilson and I had a pretty lengthy discussion. We certainly would love your continued feedback. I imagine we'll hear a little bit more tonight. And we're also going to put the information on our website to get more online feedback, and also from the committees. And so look forward to having that discussion.
And then...
All right. Do we move to public?
Madam President?
Minister Raseem.
If I may, and also, you just brought to mind, I want to thank former councilman Ali Salonell and the Camden High Alumni Association for that very successful alumni barbecue, that we had the opportunity to watch the Muhammad show, to interview some great alumni and community people who were pro and con of Camden High School, because we definitely wanted to hear both sides of the story, and we're going to report out to it. Look forward to that coming out soon. But I think it was a wonderful event of the community coming together, and singing the old Panther stride, and all of those things. I just want to commend them for that. It was a very successful day.
Thank you.
Thank you, Minister Raseem.
Move to public comment.
We will now move to public comment, and we will have our legal department, General Council, read to you a statement before calling up the first name.
Rules for public comment. The Camden City School District welcomes the attendance and comments from all members of the public at its meetings. This public comment period is your turn, time to be heard on the agenda items in this meeting. Each person who signed up to comment will have three minutes. You will be notified when your three minutes arrive. You will be notified when your three minutes are up. You cannot yield your time to another person. When it is your turn to speak, please remain at the podium and address all of your comments to the board president or the superintendent. Please conduct yourself in a respectful and courteous manner. For anyone whose comments or actions either harass, intimidate, or threaten the safety of any person, we will provide you with a warning or immediately end your comment time. Also, if you curse, use vulgar language, or make personal attacks, we will provide you with a warning or end your comment time. We will not interrupt you during your three minutes of comments. Members of the audience should also not interrupt the speaker at the podium. If you have any questions, please ask your questions during your three-minute comment period. After the public comment period is closed, the superintendent or designee will address your questions to the extent provided by law. First commenter is Jake Zychik.
I'm with Parents for Great Camden Schools. I work as the outreach director, or as most people know me, the other guy who works with Brian Morton. Thank you, thank you. First off, I would like to thank all of the board members, elected officials, and people from the Camden City School District for coming out tonight to our parent appreciation dinner, which was right down the hallway. We had 250 families representing nearly every single school in the city of Camden. We worked with the school district, the family and operations coordinators, to identify 20 of their most active and engaged families and parents to really just appreciate them this evening with a hot meal, some Christmas baskets, and a free, you know, some toys for the children. There was a lot of excitement in the room to really work on things such as the transportation policy in the city of Camden, IEPs, and just a few other topics. Lastly, I just really want to thank everybody in the board, the elected officials, and the district. They really believe in parent engagement. No matter what side necessarily they're always coming from on the aisle, they really do believe in parent engagement, and it's one of the real reasons that the graduation rate hasn't increased and that you're just seeing more involvement in the classroom and in after-school programs. So from Parents for Great Camden Schools, we want to thank everybody here for really believing in the engagement work that we do and that similar organizations also do throughout the city. Thank you for your time.
Next speaker, Richard Serrano. Richard Serrano.
My name is Richard Serrano, and I'm with Parents for Great Camden School, and I've been involved with them for about two years. And I'm proud to say that I'm proud to work with this organization because I've seen a lot of changes and how they actually, like, are motivated and how they tackle the events from the roots and how we are able to, like, encourage parents. And I've seen a lot of parents that was, like, afraid to, like, speak up, but being though, like, we got their back and how we motivate them into, like, doing better for the community, for their child, and everything, and I've seen a lot of improvements during the past years, how parents are actually, like, standing up for their right, and I see a lot of kids are doing a lot better during the time that I've been involved with Parents for Great Camden School. And I'm just, I'm actually proud to be a part of the team and actually proud to be with my organization, and that's all I have to say, and I'm thank you for your time and to hearing us out, and I hope everyone have a wonderful holiday. Thank you.
Next speaker, Sean Miles.
How y'all doing? My name is Sean Miles, with Parents for Great Camden School, and I'm also a parent advocate. I go outdoor to door, knocking on, you know, talking to parents about their issues, what they have in their child's school, whatever, whether it's good or bad, you know, then we come bring it to y'all. If they don't, some of them don't like to talk, which I understand, so we bring the issues to y'all. And we do one-on-ones with them, you know, go to their house, get a report with them, you know, with their, you know, no, just stuff they, you know, going through in their child's school and everything. And I'm a little nervous. Please forgive me. All right, I'd just say thank you and happy holidays to everybody, and thank all the parents for coming out today.
Tamia Ingalls. Oh, there she is.
Hello, my name is Tamia Ingalls, and I'm a parent advocate for Parents of Great Camden Schools, also a parent of a child who attends Big Picture Learning Academy. On November the 9th, I opened my home up to 11 families to have a meeting with Paymon, Jersey Cam, and the Parents' Solution. We had a nice outcome. A lot of parents spoke about their concerns, had a lot of good questions that was answered, and a lot of changes that was made since November the 9th. I feel as though if parents stop vetting on the internet and come out to the board meetings and actually speak about their concerns, and their comments will be heard, things will be changed. Thank you. Enjoy your holiday.
Jose Perez. Is it Lejoy Mortis, Mortar?
Miss Morton.
Good evening. My name is Lejoy Morton. I am a parent for Great Camden Schools, Camden City Schools. Sorry, maybe, I have a son, two kids right now, Masterie North Camden. Malik Morton has been here since kindergarten. I think they're great. Teamwork is wonderful. Communication with the parents is great. They don't just contact you about bad behavior. You get all behavior. Right now, second grade, Malik is where they are expecting him to be at the end of the school year, so he's already at his end of the year mark right now, so I think that's excellent. They're still pushing him, not just him, but all the kids, they're still pushing, you know, forward, so I think that right there is, you know, a good sign of, you know, the school and how they teach their kids, and, you know, they're determined to teach them and for them to get it. So Malik, there, you can say how you feel about it. Go ahead, hurry up, so we can go. Stop, come on now. Come on, you got two seconds, come on. Come on, Malik. Really not going to do it now? Come on, we gotta go. One, two. They can't hear you. Let me pick you up. All right, we're gonna go. Come on, Malik. Now Malik want to act like he's shy and he can't talk now, but I don't know, real quick, today I did get a, they did...
In the other time, he's running all over, talking to everything.
Right, about everything, right, right. But today, I did get a text from his teacher. They did informational writing piece, and she texted me and said that Malik did a really great job on his, so I don't know why he don't want to talk now, but he want to talk, boy. All right, whatever.
Season's greeting star. I have some gifts for you board members. I would like to say, you know, after last month's meeting, I think that we made some headway on what's been going on. You listen to some of the children. I see you got the French teacher and the Spanish teacher over there at Camden High, but we still have source for teachers in our public schools, and that would be a problem. Now, I want to ask Ms. Wilson, I want to direct this question to Ms. Wilson and Mr. Rhaneford. I want to know, does this board have a code of ethics that they're supposed to follow? Because if they do, that was broken. Now, last month, our group, New Jersey Community United, we come to the meetings. We are also South Jersey United, which are educators, all on the East Coast from schools. We all go to each other's board meetings, and to have one of the advisory board, advisory board people sit up in here and call our people crackers, crackers, after we had the young people from Woodrow Wilson talk about the racial tension, Brother Raseem was running around here after the meeting, calling our invited guests crackers. So for Christmas, I giving each one of y'all a bag of crackers, because tonight you're going to eat your crackers. How dare you use racial epithets and slurs at our invited guests here? How dare you? You are supposed to be representing an educational school district, and you're running up in here where the kids had the food at, where the children who sit on the board had the food. You ran in that office while I was there and start saying, "They brought all these crackers here." Well, tonight, our crackers want you to eat the cheese. That's why you got cheese crackers. How dare you? Tonight, I stand before you as a Camden longtime resident, as a concerned citizen of the city of Camden, and I say, "I want your resignation. You service nothing that our children need." You know, coming from the police department, we used to have a MA grant, and the MA program had our children that were in needs of services in the middle schools and the high schools, it was a grant. I heard you got the grant, and now our children no longer get those services, so when they see murders, shootings, and robberies, they get no help. I call for your resignation tonight. Step down off the board, because you, sir, and you could call this a personal attack because that's what it is, do not represent what we want in our city.
Next speaker, Larry Blake.
My name is Larry Blake, first vice president of the Camden Education Association. I just have a few things that I want to discuss with you guys. PARS, PAR professionals, they are going to be evaluated this upcoming school year, spring 2017, and they have not been fully trained. I understand that they have webinars going forth, but what we are asking is that the members, the school leaders, actually physically train these PARS on their evaluation tool, because they do have a lot of questions. So if we can get that started, that would be great. The other concern that I have, or we have, CEA has, is the number of security guards. We also, I mean, I understand at Woodrow Wilson that you guys hire additional security guards, but it's still not enough, and we are concerned that the members in that building and the students in that building are not being protected, so if you can reconsider hiring more, that would be wonderful. Thank you.
Next speaker, Dave Salas. Or Deva Salas. Dava Salas.
Deva Salas, you had it right. I only have one thing to say. Mohammed, or Mohammed, whatever your name is...
Ma'am, please direct your comments to the board president or superintendent. Please don't...
He needs to resign. He has no right calling anybody that talks here a cracker. I live in the city of Camden. I spoke on my side, and for him to make racial comments, he does not belong on the school board. He needs to resign. I second Ms. Vida in asking him to resign. That's all I have to say.
Next speaker, Nyquira Allen.
Thank you, superintendent and board, for giving me the opportunity to speak today. I know there's a lot of community conversation about the work that you have done towards working to improve the circumstances in Camden and what you have done to support the growth of the Renaissance schools. I'm honored to be here tonight to speak at the success and opportunity at these schools such as KIP that they have brought to me and my family and my children. My name is Nikki Allen. I'm a parent of three school-age students. Initially, I was apprehensive about sending my children to KIP because of the strict rules and structure that they have there during the school day. Like any other mother, naturally, I was concerned that my children could possibly be mistreated or not be able to adapt to the strict structure. The faculty and staff, however, were very welcoming, and they were very open to addressing my concerns and ensuring that my children were safe there, because at one point, I felt like they wouldn't be safe where the school was located. I would take trips from my school, Camden County College, two or three times a day to go visit my children, just to stalk them, basically. But then, as time went on, I became more comfortable with KIP and the faculty and staff, and I just want to say, on behalf of KIP, I want to say thank you for your support in Renaissance schools because of the joy that they have caused me in my life for me and my children. I've seen great improvement in my children in their academic improvement, their abilities to learn and comprehend, and I just, I'm really impressed with the school, and I just want to say thank you on behalf of KIP.
Thank you.
Sarah Jocelyn.
I also was very pleased to see several creative things being done. For example, I see that there's an effort to get 10,000 books that will be distributed to students at the monthly food pantries. I would like to know how many schools have food pantries and report back. I do think it's great to have libraries being built by families. This is important. A summer literacy program. I know that we've reported in the past that there's about 1,000 students that participated last year in summer school. Have we started planning for next year? I believe it is about 10% of the student population that attended. It's extremely important to have literacy programs, as we've said before, the K through third grade students. How many of the students that participated in the summer program were the rising first graders to fourth graders? That would be an important understanding to have. I see that there's supposed to be a STEM lab added at Creative Arts. I see that as a positive thing. I don't think we've had a report on the enrollment. We've gone past that October, end of October date. I think there should be a report made on the enrollment as we're approaching their budgeting time, and things, people should be made aware of that. I saw that the Big Picture School is doing some career exploration, field trips, but I don't see that from the other schools that have sixth to eighth graders. Thank you for having those types of opportunities for the sixth to eighth graders, but we should be making that available to all of the students. Uncommon Schools is planning to renovate Bonzel. They're going to do this with the students in place by segregating the building. I just wanted to be sure, Pine Point's going to be renovated by taking students out when it's empty. Whittaker's being renovated when it's empty. I'm wondering about the situation with Bonzel and for possible contamination for students, health issues, so please address that. We've again talked about the limited computer resources, and I see that there was a library that was dedicated at Kramer. I'm still concerned about librarians and children... I'm still concerned about librarians and children being educated on how to properly do searches for both on computers and in libraries and real books. So please, please comment about the availability of making that for all students and providing resources so that students can reach their student learning standards in reading and literacy. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alfred Banks.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm not going to go into reiterating the things that was already said. I'm pleased to hear a lot of the new things that have taken place, and I'm just as excited as the President, Ms. Wilson, is with moving forward.
Thank you.
What I would hope is that we continue to move forward and continue to talk about the things that we are doing and not let them start to fade off. This is the second year that my children have been attending the KIP and now the new mastery school for high school. And I'm pleased with the progress that is being made. The schools are really showing a concern for their education as well as the parents' personal lives and their development when it comes to interacting with the school system. I would hope that they continue to do that, and I'll strive to make sure that happens as a parent. And in closing, I just want to thank you for allowing the Renaissance and the charter schools to continue to grow here in Camden. But I implore you to put the same kind of concern in the traditional public schools --
That's right.
--because we need a joint effort from both. Thank you.
Thank you.
Willie Turner. Willie Turner. Lakeia Jackson.
Thank you, Superintendent and Board, for giving me the opportunity to speak today. I know there's been a lot of conversation in the community about the work you have done to work to improve Camden. Yeah, my name is Lakeia, and I am a very proud parent of two students that go to KIP. My first son has been at KIP since they was in the trailers. And being experienced with the trailers and the staff and members of KIP School allowed me to take my oldest son out of archway school to put him in KIP. I personally am willing to work with you to help improve things and to keep the Renaissance Schools open and let them expand. I consider KIP to be a family school. The teachers are there like family to me. They know you by your first name, not just by your child. They personally have given me their cellphone numbers so that I can be able to contact them for support, not just for myself, but for my children, for their education. I never have been in a school like that where teachers will give you their cellphones, where you can constantly call them if you need help with anything for the children, which I appreciate at all times. I can visit my son's school with no problem. They have great security there. It's an open school. It's very safe. It's a clean building. The teachers there and the staff there also gave me the opportunity to, you know, be a good parent, to involve me with everything. They also are good because they push the kids, and they push them, and they make sure these kids exceed and to get to the next level as far as they can. My son is special needs, and the social workers there are very excellent. She helped me as soon as he got there to give him a one-on-one, and that helped improve things there. Even if things got out of hand, they were able to help me to put him in a different school, but also continue to keep him a part of KIP family. It made me more to be an informed parent and an empowered parent. They also include me in dialogues and complete transparently with everything in the school. My experience there has been very positive, and I can only wish for more kids to be there and to keep going to KIP. So I would like for them to make sure they keep KIP open and to keep opening up for more Renaissance Schools. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker, Andrea. Sorry, I can't read the last name. Andrea?
Good evening. My name is Andrea Wari, and I thank you, Superintendent and Board, for allowing me to speak tonight. I have a seven-year-old granddaughter who's a student at KIP Academy. One of the main things that I like about KIP is the techniques that they use in the classroom as far as teaching the kids in reading and math. And also, they teach them, you know, about maintaining good academics and character. And they're very, she's a very proud student, not just to be at KIP, but she likes learning. She's a good scholar. And one of the other things that I like is that at kindergarten age, she was doing equations. She was doing 60 math problems in 60 seconds, reading 30 minutes, 30 seconds a paragraph and things of that nature. So I'm very proud to be a parent of her child in the Renaissance Schools, but also, all the kids in the city of Camden deserve the same education and the same opportunities.
Agreed.
So for that reason, I also advocate for Renaissance Schools, but I also advocate for the education of all the kids in the city of Camden, okay? Because I come from a generation of public school in Camden. My children come from the public schools in Camden. And I do have to say that in my children's generation, I had kids that hated Camden High. I'm sorry I didn't take them out of Camden High. My youngest son didn't graduate. He was in his 12th grade. He didn't like the teachers. He said they were on drugs. They didn't have books. They, the security guards, you know, it was just crazy, you know? And I regret that they didn't have that opportunity that the kids have now. So for that reason, I am willing to advocate not only for the Renaissance, but the whole city of Camden. Thank you.
Russo Roberson.
Hi, yes, that's Rosso Roberson. And I'm also a city resident. I am a graduate of Camden Public Schools on every level, from elementary up through high school. I was a graduate of Camden High School, class of 1994. And my son is now a student at KIP. And I can definitely say that I do see a tremendous change in this transition that's happening in the city. And, you know, as a parent advocate, I feel as though the change that we see is overall positive. You know, change always creates some type of tension. But in a conversation I was having with someone earlier today, you know, I mentioned an observation that I've made in life is that nothing that, nothing can grow without change. There's not a thing in this world that grows without changing at all. And so, you know, the change that we see in this, in this public school system right now is, you know, is just a matter of, is a matter of growth. And, you know, granted, it will cause tension on several different levels and for several different reasons. But, you know, hopefully, at the end of the day, everyone's issues can be addressed and resolved, you know, with the best, with the best solutions. I think KIP and a lot of, you know, all of the other schools have been a great addition to the school system. And I can say that, you know, just from a professional standpoint, you know, sometimes competition makes the other side perform better. And, you know, hopefully, we'll see that in this situation here where, you know, we obviously have, you know, a very tense relationship now, but, you know, instead of being contenders in the future, hopefully, we'll have, you know, a lot more collaboration for, you know, for the betterment of everybody involved. So, you know, again, you know, I think what's going on is great. I think KIP is doing a great job with the, with the community and the students and the parents. I love the level of engagement as a parent advocate, from the Saturday schools to a lot of the different other activities and events that they have for the students and the parents. I hope to see that continue. And again, you know, I really, I really would like to see more of a collaboration, you know, in the future versus the tension that we see now. But, you know, again, like I said, overall, you know, hopefully, that tension helps to elevate, you know, everybody that's involved in the game. Thank you.
Thank you.
W. Marshall. W. Marshall. Ruben Rodriguez? Ruben Rodriguez. I have two Keith Bensons. I don't know which one signed up first.
Good evening.
Good evening.
The, about the options that you guys gave with Camden High School, with one, moving to Big Picture, option two, Forest Hill, option three, a combination between Big Picture and Rigs. I think a fourth option should have been presented, which is leave the school alone. And that really needs to be explored. So in May 2013, I started my doctoral studies at Rutgers, which I embarked on because in my view, so much wrong was happening in the administering of education here. Renaissance schools ran by lily-white charter management organizations were being forced on us, and they were being imposed on us despite the literal cries from residents and educators to keep their schools. I was in the audience when I watched the board ignore our people's pain and anguish, only to execute a predetermined plan to collapse our district and turn it over to moneyed interests. Also that year, our sad, sad mayor asked the state to take over our district, and the state did. And next, that year, our superintendent was appointed by Governor Christie. Certainly, a lot happened in 2013 when I began my doctoral work with a plan to rectify a lot of what I deem to be unfair here. But before I continue, I want to acknowledge a few things. First is that for years, I have been identifying Governor Christie as a racist who governs as a bully and from a white supremacy worldview. It became plain how racist Christie is through his steadfast support of our xenophobic, KKK-supported, private parts-grabbing president-elect. Next, I want to identify Mayor Redd for the Norcros puppet that she is and has been ever since entering public life, a tenure spanning nearly 20 years. What can't be argued is that those of you on stage were either chosen by a racist or by a longtime political yes woman. Thus, it is clear, none of you were appointed to exercise independent thought or actions. None of you were appointed to speak for Camden's people, 97%, of whom are black or brown. You are there precisely to act as an arm of either a racist or a lackey. With that as a starting point, with it being understood that you all aren't here to represent us in any way, it's easy to understand the district's actions in marginizing residents and the board's silence throughout it all. I really sat a few nights ago and thought about how the district really paid a lawyer to stop residents from having the right to vote. This district, led by the appointee of this outgoing racist governor, paid to keep the community of black and brown people silenced and disenfranchised, and the board, through it all, sat saying nothing. The recent grand display of community disregard in this identity-robbing plan of destroying Camden High School. For one, it's a ridiculous plan that has nothing to do with education and everything to do with development and neighborhood flipping. Everyone knows how much Camden High is a unifying beacon and cultural center for Camdenites and its diaspora, for which is exactly the reason why racist leadership wants to see the school destroyed. Because they know how important the school is to the Parkside neighborhood. Developers know that in order to change the demographics of a neighborhood, you have to change the delivery of public education there. They know the people they are looking to attract don't want to send their kids to attend schools with the kind of kids that attend Camden High School now. So the school can't stay because keeping Camden High means keeping Parkside as it is today. And with all the development planned along Haddon Avenue meant to symbolize a newer middle-class Parkside, a new Parkside resident is being sought. And the new hypothetical Parkside resident ain't us. They know for a fact that the development coupled with a brand-new high school will cause immediate rising of rental, mortgage, and home sale prices, which simultaneously pushing out and displacing the residents who live there. If there were truly, if this was truly about improving an educational setting for our babies, the district would make the necessary renovations using community-based black and Latino contractors while keeping the school open. But this district won't do that because, like precisely, like which was previously established, the folks up there don't represent us, but will represent the will of racist and political yes men. One thing I learned from the war to protect us in North Dakota is that bullies and racists don't always win. And we residents are preparing for this fight. Long live Camden High.
Monique Ragsdale.
I'm going to speak to the--
We are the major stakeholders. Our students deserve quality material. Update textbooks and technology. Nutritional food. Full-time facility. Support staff and respect our students and families.
Thank you. Your advocacy is greatly appreciated. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Are we moving on? Are we done? Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Next speaker, Monique Ragsdale.
Thanks for the feedback.
Thank you very much for your advocacy. Really appreciate it.
It's pretty good.
It is what it is. Next speaker, Ms. Ragsdale.
Yes, ma'am. Good afternoon. I listened to your report, and I seen the school option, and I also agree with Dr. Benson. There should have been a fourth option. Also, I'm kind of curious, what do you decide to do with those children in those schools? Forest Hill, Big Picture Learning? I mean, there is students in those schools currently, right? Okay. Also, I also want to know about the ethics policy. As a proud parent, organizer for New Jersey Communities United, Save Our Schools, New Jersey, Save Schools in Camden, the member of South Jersey United, the president and the founder of the Camden High PTO, I am disappointed in the actions of your board member last board meeting. I was actually standing less than 100 feet when I heard the racist remarks. Also, when I have parents who volunteer their time, as we was talking about, the whole topic today was about parent engagement, taking out flyers, inviting parents to board members, to the board meeting so that they can be informed and understand what's going on, one of your board members, who I guess I don't have to repeat his name because it's been stated here twice already, has been intimidating a parent. Why? It's not necessary. I also request for his removal, and I'm going to charge that to you, Madam Chair.
Melissa Tomlinson.
Melissa Tomlinson. I'm here with South Jersey United, joining New Jersey's Communities United, and Badass Teachers Association. The theme of the night seemed to be about what parents want for their kids. And all parents want the best of what, you know, the best that they can get available for their-- And all parents want the best of what, you know, the best that they can get available for their kids. But the school system that we've created seems to be causing such a segregation within this city and a divide amongst the community members. You had KIP parents speaking, you have public school parents speaking, you have the other advocacy groups speaking, and it's starting to put people battling each other, head-to-head. Look what I got, look what you don't got, I got this, my kid gets this at this school, and it's not right and it's not fair to the children, who I keep saying time and time again are the ones who are getting hurt. Everybody just wants what's best for our students and the public school parents cannot understand why they're not getting what the other school parents are getting. If this system was developed to really put competition into our districts and rise everybody, it doesn't work. And the proof of that, there are stories in countless other cities of what is actually going on, cities that have had these programs longer than Camden has. I want to read a story to you. "I'm raising my children in a school system that I loved and still do, but I've seen it stripped. The state supposedly came in to help the situation, but it just seems like they came in to strip it down to what it is now. At first, 17% of students in charters were rated proficient, as opposed to 13% in public. Now this year, students are suing the state for failing to provide basic access to literacy, including charter school students. The premise of school choice is that competition raises all sectors, but that has not happened. What competition ends up producing is not a choice of failing versus good schools, but a bunch of mediocre schools. As charters attracted students, the public system lost them and hemorrhaged funds. Last year, more than 100,000 students lived in the city, fewer than 47,000 attended public, resulting in nearly 400 million loss in revenue." I have a couple of questions, and these may be repeat questions. I got a little chastised last time for asking questions that, you know, have been discussed earlier, and I apologize. I do as much research as I can in the limited amount of time, free time that I do have. I want to know what Camden's Renaissance school rate is. I was reading that it's 95% of the Renaissance school pupil expenditure, and I don't know what that expenditure rate is compared to the public school expenditure rate, and that, I know that's in regulations. And if this is what's hurting, if there's more going out towards the Renaissance schools because they're spending more and they have the availability, maybe there's something in the regulations that we need to address to help our city. I want to know if there was a project application, including a long-term range facility plan for what decisions are being made about the high school? And I want to know if a Renaissance school project proposal has been submitted in the city for the high school-level students. Thank you.
Calvin Johnson?
I don't think y'all heard of us enough. Mic check, mic check. To the Camden City Board of Education. To the superintendent, Paymon Rutherford. We demand to be included. In all planning and decision-making. Regarding our schools. We are the parents. Teachers. Students. And community of Camden. We are the major stakeholders. Our students deserve quality materials. Up-to-date textbooks and technology. Nutritious food. Full-time faculty. Support staff that respect our students and families. And public school designed with them in mind. We demand that you halt. All cooperation with the SDA. Until you have an alternative plan. For Camden High School. Developed and decided on by the community. Of students. Parents. Alumni. And community members. We demand that you stop. The takeover of our public schools. By corporate charter companies. That do not respect our families. And that divide our communities. I say, whose schools? I say, whose schools? Thank you.
Thank you.
And also, like I said, we here to save Camden High. Mic check.
Mic check. Thank you very much.
April Banks?
April, who?
April Banks.
April Banks. Thank you very much.
Hello?
Sorry ma'am.
Thank you for having me. Sorry, I've been nervous.
Thank you for coming out.
I would have to agree with what everyone was saying. I believe that all schools should...
Speak a little louder sweetheart.
I'm sorry.
It's okay.
All schools share the opportunity to learn, for their students to learn, whether it be public or Renaissance schools. However, my kids do attend KIP Norcross Academy, and I am very pleased with what they are doing with my children. They were originally homeschooled, so I was very nervous about putting them into school. But KIP has done a great job with teaching them morals and respect as far as other students and teachers go. I just would like to say that if you want to continue to put these Renaissance schools in for the children, then I would support that. And if you could just do the same that you're doing in these Renaissance schools, in the public schools, that would be a great thing as well.
Thank you so much.
Kevin Barfield?
Good evening. I know every time I come to the meeting, it's like my mind is on one thing, but once I get through this public portion, this kinda takes me through another mindset. But what I'd like to also say is that I see people up here mocking the people who are speaking. The message is great, the approach you may not agree with, but like the lady said before, that this division that seems to have taken place, the tension between parents, has to test to stop. Now, what I'm gonna say in reference to the superintendent is that just like I've been speaking for 10 years advocating for great public schools. And I've been here, since you've been here, every month just about, through the listening tours and everything else, advocating for great public schools. So it's about time that when I come up here and representing and saying what parents are saying, that you start attending to what I'm saying and make the changes in this district, the same thing you can go to these parents and have personal meetings with and things are being resolved. So, one of the things that parents have been talking about is a dual-language program. Meaning that it should be an option for all students to learn two languages. Especially if you're at risk. It's not, you know, I understand that you have your bilingual and ELL programs, but to be competitive in this 21st century, our students need to be bilingual. So we need to have a dual-language program. One of the other things that also that I would like to know that I know that we need, because this was brought out years ago in reference to a director of guidance. Because the guidance department, I'm not hearing anything in reference to their role, and even through some of the meetings that I've been attending lately, somewhere along the line, they're being missed. And that's the critical component to a lot of our children in being prepared to be college-ready and guiding our children with their scheduling. Another thing that I want to do give kudos on, which I heard in talking about the technology piece, was that the director of technology did do a comprehensive report at our Deepak meeting, and I do really have to commend the progress that has been taking change. And again, I would like that the district do invest in those computers that we know that we need to bring our technology updated. The other part too was, I do have to talk about the Camden High and the alternative part about the Forest Hill, because I just so happened to walk by there the other day, and I seen that you relocated the playground. So now you're talking about what you're gonna relocate it back to Hatch now since you just moved it back over there? So I had to laugh.
You gonna help?
And it's nice, it's a nice spongy floor and every, I mean, you know, playground and everything. But I was happy to see that, and I was hoping that we can do a rededication ceremony since it was done on behalf of the parents at Hatch and we donated pretty much the Forest Hill. I'd like to see that take place. But again, just like what was said in reference to the professional development taking place with Woodrow Wilson's staff with the dual-language professional, that we know that language is the barrier, that this becomes the issue, and we need to understand each other's culture. So we definitely need to do something more within our community, rather than with the parents and definitely with the students and staff, to do more cultural sensitivity so we can understand each other's culture. And then the language barrier. So again, that dual-language program superintendent, I would definitely love to see. Basically, that's it. And I had to say that after the technology meeting that I would have to come up here and apologize to the superintendent, because you know, I know that when I'm wrong, I can admit that, you know, like you saying, I know that your staff is working, sometimes we don't see things. But just like I was saying before superintendent, if you're not communicating the progress to the community, we only, you know, we can keep up here, we keep talking about things, but we need to, you know, you need to communicate those things and be more transparent, even if sometimes things are just kinda a blur. But there needs to really be, you know, a little bit more breakdown. But overall, you know, again, we hope that you start doing the things that we're asking for. A director of guidance, dual-language, and so we can be in the same situation to talk about the progress that are taking place with overall, especially our comprehensive high schools.
Thank you.
Agina Riggs?
Good evening.
Good evening.
This is my very first meeting, so it's a pleasure to be here. Just a few things I wanted to address to the board. One is, I'm also the co-owner of the Camden store. And we do want to thank you for the support that you've given to us as far as being part of the voucher program. It hasn't gone as smoothly as we thought, being our first time, but we have found some resolution to some of the issues we were having, and we're grateful for the patience and support. It is managed now by Troy Riggs, and we found out in August that we were finalists in a grant that supports entrepreneurship among young teens in urban communities. And last week, we were awarded $2,500 to work with high school students who are interested in either starting a t-shirt line. You don't have to wanna start a t-shirt line, but you'll learn entrepreneurship, and they'll be awarded a scholarship to start their line. We'll teach them how to silk screen. They'll be given the t-shirts. Everything is free, we just need to find the students. We also have where you can come to the store, and if you want to learn how to silk screen and can't afford the classes, you're more than welcome to come free of charge. We just ask that you give us, you know, we'll give you our flex, the time that we have, and we'll work with you. It may have to be where the classes are grouped, because it's only two or three of us. But if you want to learn the skill of silk screening, it is available. We are moving our store at the end of January. It'll be in Parkside still, but it gives us the opportunity to have a facility that has heat, and it's new. So we also have a facility that'll have the classroom where we'll teach the class that we were given the grant for. I think another effort by Troy Riggs is getting a street in Parkside named after his grandmother, Girathia Riggs, who was a former member of the board. We did present the proposal to the city council, and they seemed to be very receptive. So the next step is getting the petition, and obviously the public support to do so. We are hoping it would be Kenwood, Weavittel Park Boulevard was kind of off limits, so. Lastly, I just want to say that having a, I have two children in the public schools here in Camden. I'm not, I did not grow up in Camden, and if you were to look at what is said from people who don't live here, it's really, really different, including my friends who I grew up with in New York. Very happy with ECDC especially. It's an excellent school. My four-year-old has developed and has done exceptionally well. My daughter, my 18-year-old has an IEP. It was to the point where she was having a lot of difficulty, and she's very excited to graduate in January. So I'm very happy with the public schools, my experience with the public schools here. And I just hope that you continue to invest your time and funding to make those schools definitely aligned with the many great schools that we have in this state. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your comments.
Billy Hayes?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Billy Hayes. I came back down here from Trenton to talk about Camden High. I don't mean to be redundant, but I have taken a personal interest in the Camden High School project. And I've taken a personal interest in the project because the SDA didn't do a good job in Trenton with Trenton Central High School. And I don't want to see the failures that took place at Trenton Central High School take place again here in Camden. So last month, I asked for a feasibility study, and my question to the superintendent is, did you have a conversation with the SDA about the feasibility study? And what did he say?
I'll respond at the end of public commentary.
Okay. A feasibility study is supposed to determine whether it's feasible to do a renovation as opposed to new construction. And the study also supposed to include the cost for the temporary facilities. And cost is important because you may have to do some upgrades in the temporary facilities, and that estimated cost is a part of the feasibility study. My experience with the SDA is I've attended their meetings monthly, and most of them, they may know one area of expertise, but they don't know, they don't have all of the areas of expertise that's going to be needed to do a total demolition. And they don't always communicate with the other state agencies. The temporary facilities, I am concerned that there may be some inequity issues. We've had that in Trenton, the transportation costs went up because the school was divided, so the transportation budget went up, and it created some scheduling problems. I'm quite sure if you talk to the principal, she may disagree, but just my observation, there were some serious inequity issues. I would encourage you to obtain a copy of that feasibility study, and that study is the first step. So before the SDA started putting out pictures of what So before the SDA started putting out pictures of what they wanted for Camden, they should have did the study, because that, that's what justifies the demolition versus the renovation. So I would encourage you to obtain a copy of it, or share some information with us. Thank you.
Marquita Liang. Marquita Liang. Sean Brown.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I went to first acknowledge that tonight, I stepped, I stepped out of my evening part-time job to come here with a few students, which are all residents of Camden, most of which are our district students. You may have heard them earlier. I really, really, really enjoy working with teenagers in my own community, because as most of us know, they're unfiltered, and they're willing to say things without worrying about the political ramifications that sometimes those of us that are professionals and grownups just aren't willing to say. And through the job, every once in a while, I get a chance to just talk to young folks, and including them and my neighbors and my family, which lives in the city, about the things that are going on. And as I've said so many times before, the vast amount of complaints and issues, and even good things that I hear from people that I know, are not always well-represented at these meetings, whether it's in the presentations that Paymon gives, which are informative, but not necessarily inclusive of what's on most people's minds. But more so even from what I hear from, from the board. So I would like to, in my, in my last two minutes, just highlight both sides of that for, 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 for a little bit. I want to start off with something that I was just really disappointed by a few months ago that illustrates the problem. So, and I, I missed the November board meeting, but in October, our Board President, Ms. Wilson, who I've known for a long time, devoted a lot of time to an issue that was about, as far as I can tell, Ms. Wilson found out at the last minute that she wasn't able to go on a trip that dealt with professional development related to parental engagement. So this is a conversation that had a lot to do with how the business office operates, and timeliness, and I sat there and I, and I kept thinking that this is not anything that anybody else cares about. We want to see parental engagement, we want our board to care about parents, but we don't care about your trip, we don't care about the cancellation, in large part, as Dr. Benson said earlier, because you are an advisory board. So you're here for perfunctory reasons. Unlike other advisory boards, this board, for the most part, usually, almost all the time, has chosen not to challenge Superintendent Rohana Fard on some of our biggest issues in the district. And I want to remind us that we have issues that this board has agreed to, that I haven't heard anything about lately. Ms. Atwood agreed with me when it came to our gifted and talented program that we want to see implemented in our district. We talked about pedagogy, and what the art of teaching actually looks like in a classroom level, and how we support that as a community. And as all the young people that I talked to really encouraged me to be able to say, we have issues with inclusion and segregation in our classrooms of, are you grouping students off their ability, or simply by their age? We have questions about the implementation of, of technology, and I heard that there is this meeting that was at Deepak, and I was actually working, so I wasn't able to go to the last one. But I'm glad they were having conversations about these things. But Madam President, and to the board, some of the stuff that I hear talked about tonight, whether it's complaints or for, from Ms. Wilson herself, are things we've been talking about for years, well before I was even on the board. I attended my first board meeting in 2006, so I guess this is my 10-year anniversary, because I know it was cold outside that day. I remember walking down Pine Street in the dark, because I didn't have a car in those days. But for 10 years. So I just want to remind you, I, I, for, for the most part, personally, I think you're good people. But as a unit, that's figure out a way to capture power, to implement the types of changes that we need to see related to what the actual teaching that goes on in the classroom, which is the most important thing that we can influence as a, as a school district. We, we were getting better, as Paymon acknowledges, but that, when he says that we still have far to go, remember that we have far to go means kids aren't getting into college that should be. Kids aren't getting the types of jobs and employment that they need. The reputation of our city continues to be bad. Teachers don't have the resources that they, teachers don't have the resources that they need. So I would encourage you to, if you didn't get the chance to see it, look at the presentation that I gave at Rutgers a couple of weeks ago. It's on Facebook, if you're my Facebook friend. And I challenged the Superintendent, the board, certainly the union leadership, Aramark, to think about the deliciousness of food, the pedagogy and teaching in our classrooms, and how we can use power to make things happen.
Thank you.
Amir Khan.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
You know, I'm, I'm real big on, on visuals, I'm real big on optics. I'm real big on what something looks like. And, and tonight, I was really disturbed, because somewhere along the line, the board got together, maybe it was the marketing person, maybe it was the PR person, and you were able to bring people in from Kip Norcross School and other schools to talk about how great their kids are doing. And I can tell you this, that the person who is the most adverse to a charter or Renaissance school, still is not against a mom and their child doing well in their schoolwork. The, the issue is not the moms, the issue is not the kids, but like it was stated earlier, it's bringing division in the community. There's a great divide. Actually, the law of segregation in 1895 was that very thing, separate but equal. That was the law in 1895. It was tested and shot down in 1954, because it was everything but separate but equal. It was actually the Jim Crow construct. We're making it separate, but it's not really equal. I can say this, because I'm probably the only one around this area that can say that they got approved for a charter school in Cherry Hill. We were approved, the only one ever approved in the history of the United States to be approved in a high-performing school district, and it was all black and brown. And we are proving something, because the blacks and browns in Cherry Hill and Voorhees were failing at two times the rate that the whites were. And the moment the so-called Governor Christie saw what we were doing, and, and was real supportive in the, in the beginning, threw everybody under the bus, because they didn't want to see a school go forth and bring up the grades of blacks and browns. Today, what I see is the very same thing happening in Camden right now. I see schools going forth that are separate but equal. You know what I'm hearing tonight? I'm hearing people say that if the charter schools and Renaissance schools can enhance the way they are, why aren't the traditional public schools enhancing the way they are at the same rate? Superintendent, awesome to see the numbers go from 47% or 49% to 70%. That's fantastic. But when you look at the breakdown of where things are with the traditional public compared to the Renaissance and charter schools, it appears to be separate but not equal. I challenged the board, the advisory board tonight, to think about the optics, the visual, what people are seeing and what people are hearing. Because to get people and parade them up here, and talk about how great they're doing, and then you have people in the traditional public schools who aren't getting the computers, they're not getting the books, they're not getting the teachers, it creates such a division, and it's the one thing that we don't need in Camden right now, is more division. Thank you very much, and God bless you.
Thank you, thank you.
Next speaker, I'm sorry, I'm having trouble pronouncing the name. Was it Boat? Oh, Brian Morton.
Good evening. Happy holidays to everyone, Advisory Board. My name is Brian Morton, I live at 113 State Street. I'm the proud parent of three beautiful little girls that all attend school here in the city of Camden. What I wanted to talk about tonight was moving forward in a city with two tails. Where some families see firsthand the benefits to their children when they are in a rich, rigorous educational setting. And then on the other hand, we have heard from other families that aren't quite feeling the same thing. But we have seen it presented by some speakers as if it's a magic ruse that's taking place, as if some deck had been stuck, so that kids can learn in one setting, and they're not learning in another setting. And for me, that, that's upsetting, because I'm a parent. And one thing my kids know is, I don't care what you say when you come to me, it has to be the truth and it has to be facts. So two things I wanted to talk about tonight, that are actually impacting the outcomes in education here in the city of Camden, that has nothing to do with the model, and everything to do with the laws that govern the state of New Jersey. And the first one is the transportation policy. The transportation rule here in the state of New Jersey says you have to live over 2.1 miles to receive busing. We've created these vast, rich pools of quality schools in the city of Camden, and made them out of reach for some students, because they don't live far enough to go to the school. So parents are making a choice, you know, where that's the school I want to go to, but this is the one I can get to. And so the policy around transportation that says you have to live over two miles away, and we're not big enough for that. We're not a big enough city for that. And then the second thing in that policy is it doesn't recognize the dangers inherent to the city of Camden, right? So it will say that a danger to a child is a highway, but a drug corridor that can take a child's life is not. So you don't qualify for busing. So your dream of wanting to get to a quality school, or a good school, or any school, I don't care what the school type is, any school you want to go to, you should have the ability to get to. But that policy is preventing it. And that is something that this board can take collective action and compel our, our Superintendent to lend his voice to the State Board of Education, to get those policy changes, to get the language changed in the policies so that more students can get to school. 23% of parents have cars, own cars in the city of Camden. 23% own cars. So over 75% do not have vehicles, so we are dependent upon public education. And when it comes to our children, we're dependent on the district. So I, 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 I ask you to, to lend your voice to change that policy. And the next policy is around substitute teachers and the length of time they can actually teach in a classroom. I've heard, you know, especially at our comprehensive high schools, where we don't have science and math teachers, and teachers that are able, where students are able to be in front and know that they're learning from the curriculum. And that has nothing to do about if it's a charter, if it's a Renaissance, but it has everything to do with, if it's a traditional public, because the policies govern who can be in your classroom and for how much time. So I've, I've heard Mr. Barfield say, we want people at Wilson, and I'm a Wilsonite, everyone knows. I'm proud of Woodrow Wilson. But I also know classrooms are empty, because the law says that even if the teacher is out, and it's not about teachers, it's about laws, that if there's no one to go in that classroom, if, if, we can't hire a substitute, at least, and give them a full-time position. We can't. We, we, we argue over Source for America, or Teach for America, but these are young people that have gone to college, gotten their college degrees, and have come to the, to one of the hardest cities in America and said that they want to teach here. And we're telling them they're not good enough. So when I look at my daughters and I say, listen, baby, you want to be a teacher, you want to be an astronaut, I almost have to tell them, you can't come back home to do it. And so when we're, when we're talking about the opportunities that are available, let's not make up lies. Let's not make it up like they're boogeymen that are keeping certain children in underperforming schools, or creating a situation where underperforming can happen. Because the same kids that are in Mastery, that are in Kip, that are uncommon, that are in Camden Community Charter, Camden Charter Network, ECO, Due Seasons, LEAP, are the same ones that were in Cooper Point, Yorkshire, Sumner. Parents made a choice based upon what they were seeing, and what they weren't seeing. And we have to respect that choice. But at the same time, we have to make an effort where we can and change the policies that are setting, making the playing field uneven. I admit, there are, there's an ability, and there's a freedom in some schools when it comes to hiring, and when it comes to firing individuals that are not delivering a high service to students. And then there's another playing field where that is not so freely given. So I've heard from everybody tonight, and, 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 and I am upset when I hear, when we tend to just point and say, Paymon, it's your fault. Or we tend to say things like, listen, you're an appointed board. Well, listen, I served on an appointed board, and you know what? And I chose not to serve on other appointed boards. Because it's not, when the call came in, you chose to serve when others chose not to. I give you full credit. I live with one of your board members. So I, I, I don't know the specifics of your fights, but I know that you fight in closed session. And that's like my, that's like me and my wife. We fight in private and never in front of our kids, because we have to show a unified front. We have to. And so I commend you for that, and I tell you to keep fighting, and I tell you, it doesn't matter how you got here, it's that you're here, and you have a job to do, and it's one of the toughest in the city. So please do it on behalf of our children. And with regards to the transportation policy, and with regards to the policy covering substitute teachers in a length of time, they can serve in a classroom. We need those two policies re-examined, and I believe that we can really see tremendous gains in all schools, because it is not about a certain type of school. It is about all schools. My mom has 25 kids, grandkids, 25 grandkids, and they're in every type of school in the city of Camden. And so that is on your watch. You voted for Renaissance schools, you passed through the money to charter. I don't care what people say about you. You have more power than some people want to give you credit for, and you show up month after month, and you take the abuse, and you take the beating, and you keep coming back. But just know, you got 15,000 students depending on you, month after month. So with that, Merry Christmas and Happy New Year, because in 2017, we got a hell of a lot of work to do to get this ball moving up the hill.
Kelly Francis.
Thank you, Mr. Martin.
Kelly Francis.
Good evening, board members, Kelly Francis. First of all, I want to extend my congratulations publicly to one of my students that has been with us in WCP Acto Program since seventh grade, he was our mascot, even before he was eligible to compete, Josh Sims. But once he became a ninth grader, he competed, and he competed at the highest level. He's an extraordinary young man, I'm extremely proud of him. He traveled all over the country with us, with his brothers, who are accomplished artists, and are now graduates of colleges. So, so Josh, congratulations, and Godspeed. And I know you're going to be successful, because you have already a huge success so far in your life. So, but, oh, by the way, he was one of our statewide gold medalists this year in music contemporary performance. And he took him to Cincinnati, Ohio, where he competed nationally against high school students from all over the country. And he was chosen to play in the band for the award ceremony at the national convention. That's how accomplished he is. So, and his mother, of course, has been our Donna Irons. His mother has been our science coordinator for the past 10, 12 years, since our programs have been in the back. So, and, and her, all of her... And all of her sons are accomplished artists, and they are doing extremely well. They're now professionals, the two older sons. Now, the other thing I want to say is, you folks here on this board, you're an advisory board for the comprehensive of the public schools. I've been told that by the superintendent that he has nothing to do with the charter schools. That's not his jurisdiction. It has no authority on what goes on in the charter school, or the Renaissance school. Now, I was very curious that you have all of these folks coming to this advisory board that manages the traditional public schools and speaking about what's going on in the charter and Renaissance school. You folks don't have any jurisdiction. Now, I have gone to the board meetings for some of the Renaissance schools. I've gone to the board meeting, but there are no parents there. You know, at one meeting, I was the only person there, a member of the public, at one of the Renaissance School board meetings. And why are the parents coming here? I mean, they're taking up a valuable time that the public school parents should be expressing their concerns. So are they using this forum because the Renaissance schools and charter schools don't have TB exposure? So they come here so that they can promote their schools or recruit and market the Renaissance schools to the rest of the public? Is that why they come here and they don't go to their own board meetings? Now, I haven't gone to all of the charter school board meetings or Renaissance, but some of them that I've gone to, there are no parents there. So they need to go to their board meetings and express their concerns about what's going on in their Renaissance charter school. So it looks to me like they're using this board and our TV station to promote their agendas and their own Renaissance and charter schools. Very curious, why are they coming here when they should be going to their own board meetings? That's all I have. Oh, and to everyone, having an enjoyable holiday, whatever holiday you celebrate, Christmas, Kwanzaa, Hanukkah, and any other celebrations that you may partake of. And be safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Francis. Keith Benson, Senior.
Oh, I'm sorry. Who was the next person?
One more.
Oh, okay.
One more.
I won't be before you long, but I'm curious. I'm trying to process this. This is a lot of information to take in, and I'm, you know, struggling to understand it. But I think, if I'm not mistaken, Chris Christie runs, is the final arbiter of what goes on on this board. So it would be his decision to close down our beloved Camden High. But I think I might have read somewhere that Chris Christie is a thoroughly discredited public figure. Some people even say he might be a criminal. So I'm trying to wrap my head around, if he's a criminal and a discredited figure with the lowest of ratings since they had ratings, and this board is doing his bidding. You see where I'm going? I want you guys to have a wonderful holiday. Don't talk about taking down Camden High because you either don't know what it means or you don't have the creativity to come up with a better idea. Put the school in the back, there's more than enough acreage, and let us make Camden High a construction trade college. Let's be creative. The final thing I'm going to say is, I understand that there is a principal at Forest Hill who has said some inflammatory things to our children racially. I asked about it at the last meeting, why is he still there? I didn't get an answer. I would like to know if there was someone in our public schools, Forest Hill specifically, making racially insensitive statements. At least, that's the way it was portrayed to me. But don't forget the first question. If Chris Christie is discredited, maybe even, some people say there's an investigation where he might be a criminal, I don't want you guys to be exposed to Rico or anything like that. I want you to be careful and have a good holiday. I'm disgusted with Camden High and how you're treating it, and we're going to fight it all the way. God bless you.
Final speaker, Philip Lopez.
Hi, how is everyone doing today? I just came here just to give everybody thanks for giving us choices in Camden. My son goes to Mastery, which is a Renaissance school, and I'm just happy for the opportunity that Camden has, not just for public schools, that we have charter schools, we have Renaissance schools, and that myself as a parent have the choice to make that choice, to either go to a public school or charter school or Renaissance school. My son is completely engaged in Mastery School. He is thriving. He enjoys going to school. I literally have to pull him out of school when I have to pick him up. So I am happy for that. The teachers love to teach, and I see that. I go there on a daily basis throughout the day, on various days of the week, just to check. And I watch. It is amazing to see what the teachers are doing there, you know? And it's not just about the teachers, just to inform the individuals here in the audience. It's also what we have to do as parents. When our children come home, we have to put in the time. You know, yes, the teachers have them for most of the time during the day, but we have to put in the time at home with the homework, with reading to our children, with our children reading to us. If we don't put in the time, we cannot expect the teachers to do it all. But here, I say again to the superintendent, to the board, I thank you so much for everything that you do. Because of you guys, my child is thriving in school. Please, keep doing all that you do. Thank you for bringing Mastery here to Camden because our children are thriving, and I thank you so much for that. Have a wonderful Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lopez. That ends public comment.
All right. The first thing I want to do is just address one of maybe the theme of today's board meeting, which is the charter Renaissance school versus district school and the divide that many people referenced and spanned a variety of perspectives, including those that support charter Renaissance schools and those that don't. And I'm actually going to push back equally across each and every one of those individuals, respectfully. So whether it's Brian Morton or Pastor Khan, Ms. Tomlinson, or really anyone who raised that argument. And here's why. So I have always been saying that the conversation in board meetings doesn't reflect the reality outside of board meetings. And so, what I mean by that is, so many of the families that I bump into remind me of the anecdote that Mr. Morton shared about his grandmother that has 25 grandchildren, where you see in one family, kids attending charter, Renaissance, and traditional public schools. And that is just kind of the reality of life, and it's a rising tide that lifts all boats that those options exist and kids are benefiting. While things are imperfect, kids are benefiting. And still, I heard, again, from a wide variety of people I truly respect, that it's like this tale of haves and have-nots. What's interesting is, if you listen carefully tonight, the conversation in the board meeting is becoming more reflective of what's happening outside of the board meeting because we had parents tonight talk about how their students are benefiting traditional public schools from PGCS, Parents for Great Camden Schools, and some non-PGCS parents. So we heard some stories about ECDC and Big Picture Learning Academy and Cooper's Point and the benefits that are playing out there. And yet, you know, we still have this argument coming from people that I know don't agree and see eye to eye all the time, which is fine. But I just want to remind us that we're actually hearing some truly positive stories here that I think is more reflective of what happens outside of this boardroom. And I started the meeting today by sharing with you some of those points of progress at our traditional public schools. And so, Pastor Khan, I appreciate that you referenced the graduation rate improvement from 49% to 70%, and you said when you actually disaggregate the data, you see a different story. I probably should have made this more clear, that number is just for our traditional public schools, the 49% to 70%. In fact, everything, just about everything, the facilities investments would be one exception to that, but just about everything I shared was about how our traditional public schools are improving. And so, that is a rising tide that's lifting all boats. Clearly, we have some challenge in front of us, and, by the way, so do some of our Renaissance schools, so do some of our charter schools. It's not that things are perfect on one side and completely imperfect on the other, but it's that both sides are improving. Parents are benefiting from those improvements. And I was actually encouraged, for the first time in a long time, we heard positive stories on both sides in our actual boardroom. So just some of the more specific questions that were raised. Is Mr. Blake still here? All right, so we'll follow up with him separately about paraprofessional support in the evaluation process and the question about security guards. Ms. Jostelin, as always, I don't have every answer to your question off the top of my head. Are you still here? There you are. So whether it's how many schools have pantries and how many students in summer school are in grades, are in rising grades one to four, the enrollment report, I think, is a great suggestion. And we will follow up in January, so just make sure our staff takes note of that. We should give an update there. And with Bonzel and the renovations with the students there, like for all of those, we can follow up with you separately and give you the information. Ms. Ragsdale, you had asked, is she still here?
No.
You'll pass it on. So she just mentioned that in the three options for the temporary facilities, what happened to the students that are at Hatch and Forest Hill? So apologies if this wasn't made clear. The point there would be, there's enough excess space in the buildings that you can make it work. So in the case of Hatch, there are only 300 students there. The building can accommodate far more than 300. So in one, so like, give you one example, the middle school students could go to the annex, and so, the high school students could be on one of the three floors. And then, the Camden High students could be on the other two floors. It'll be a pretty full building at that point, and it'll create some inconveniences for the Big Picture Learning Academy staff. I'm actually sitting down with the principal to talk through it in more detail. We'll sit down with the families. But that's what we mean by that. We do have a plan for those students at those schools. Ms. Tomlinson, you asked about funding. Renaissance schools are roughly 90%, 95% the district funding. The numbers we've shared when we've done our budget presentations in the past is that Renaissance schools get $19,000 per pupil. The district is closer to $23,000, $24,000 per pupil. Mr. Barfield, the dual-language program, first time I've heard that idea raised kind of prominently. It's the staffing, the certification requirements, the professional development. I mean, it's a very heavy lift, and I think that warrants maybe a sit-down conversation to talk through what steps we need to take. Can't just commit to it right here and now. Very few districts even offer dual-language, period. So it's not something that is kind of universally accessible. It's a very cool model, worth having a conversation. As far as the guidance department, I don't know, Mr. McCombs, if you want to add anything there? I think that's probably a more in-depth discussion as to how we're supporting our guidance counselors and the work ahead, but I'll let you just quickly jump in if you have some additional thoughts. Otherwise, we can sit down, Mr. Barfield.
Absolutely. Mr. Barfield, we can talk afterwards, but the Division of School Support has absorbed the responsibilities that used to be undertaken by Directors of Guidance in the past historically. And so, we have absorbed and we're working cross-functionally to make sure that the needs of our guidance counselors are met. So specifically for training, guidance counselors do still have training, and those training opportunities come from various divisions, and we coordinate, we make sure that there is streamlined communication that goes to school leaders so that they are aware of when their guidance counselors will be pulled and for what topics. So it is not the traditional approach, but we are making sure that our guidance counselors get what they need. We know that we have to tweak it because this is year one, this is the first year that we're doing it, but we are working collaboratively with other teams, making sure that our guidance counselors have what they need. Also, under Anna Chirac and the high school redesign and Jardine, they are also working to make sure that our college career readiness pieces are in place also. And we are also exploring other options for college career readiness supports to be in our schools. But I welcome the conversation to have more input to see how we can make that process better. Thank you.
Mr. Hayes, so the feasibility study. So just really quick context, about two years ago, the governor came and they made an announcement for at least a $50 million renovation at Camden High School, and then they did the feasibility study. During that process, people seated on this dais, our mayor and others advocated to the School Development Authority that $50 million was not going to be enough. And we can tell you what the feasibility report's going to tell you already, and that it's actually just inequitable and unfair, given there was a prior commitment to invest $107 million back in 2007. And so, I say all that to say, the feasibility study certainly proved that point to be true, that we needed more than $50 million for renovation. We're going to release the feasibility study in advance of the January board meeting. The feasibility study tells us where we are right now, which is, we need a full-scale reconstruction. And so, that's the reason that $50 million investment that was originally announced moved all the way up to $133 million investment. And we'll share that with everybody here on our board and the entire general public in advance of the January board meeting. Mr. Morton, about your commentary about transportation, like totally hear you. I don't know if he's still there, and there he is. So we had to move mountains to increase the high school transportation access for kids that live between two and 2.4, nine miles. I'm glad we did that. Our students deserve it. There's still more work to do, and I would love to see a world in which kids who live one or 1.5 miles away cross grades K to 12 that get busing access. I believe it requires some additional support from the state, and we've done some advocacy there. I don't think we've done enough. Potentially, there's more we can open up in our budget at some point down the road, and I think it'd be interesting to have a sit-down with some of your parents to kind of talk numbers and to talk needs and to see if there's a bridge to be built there. Because I hear that concern probably more than any other concern outside of this boardroom. Just transportation constantly comes up. Even though it's gotten better, there's still a lot we can do. Just to close things out here, Mr. Francis, I don't know if he's still here, you know, he made comments about Camden residents whose children attend non-district schools coming to our board meetings and speaking and kind of questioning that. And Mr. Francis is someone I've spent a lot of time with and respect dearly, but I was disappointed in those comments. I mean, we welcome anyone into our board meetings. We welcome teachers from Washington Township and all throughout South Jersey who aren't residents and respond to them and engage with them. And now, we're saying that Camden residents shouldn't be commenting at a board meeting, and that seems contradictory to the entire, our role in government to be responsive to all residents' needs. And so, we will always welcome anyone.
The role board meeting is first. They come first. The role board meeting is the first.
So, Mr. Francis, you've got to take into account that not every school or school charter management organization is run the same way, meaning a lot of those questions that families have, they have different ways of resolving those questions. And the board meeting is not the forum where they problem solve. They have other staff who meet regularly with families. They have parent councils, for example, that meet regularly with families and resolve those questions. So they just have a different model in the way they resolve family issues. It's not that their families don't engage with the school communities, they just don't do it in a boardroom setting. Our families tend to come here more often than not, and I think we should respect the way those families engage with their schools and respect the commentary they have because you said that I said, "We don't have a role in charter schools." And first thing I would say is, we actually have a very explicit role with Renaissance schools because we have contracts with them, and we stipulate needs and conditions in those schools. So, for example, they provide full social-emotional learning needs. And so, we do have a role. And even with charter parents, if every school in Camden is putting a fence around its students, then we're actually going against the message we heard from almost everybody today, which is, we need to actually come together and provide all kids an equitable education, and we can't do that if those conversations are happening in silos. So this is the forum where we can have that conversation.
Not on TV at the board meeting, that's why they come here.
All right, so if the resolution is to videotape their board meetings, I'm not sure if that's...
Interesting.
And then lastly, Mr. Benson, your question about the Forest Hill principle, I think you know this, because you know the intricacies of kind of personnel bylaws, and we can't comment on specific personnel matters publicly, and that's the case at every school district around the country. I want to open it up to our board members who have any other final thoughts.
Madam, you want to go first, or? Do you want to go? Did you want to?
Anyone? Anyone else have anything to say?
I did. I wanted to, does anyone else?
Go ahead.
I want, thank you, madam. I wanted to thank everyone that came out today. I think it was a very healthy meeting tonight, and this just shows the balancing of systems and what it looks like. And I think it's healthy for the city as a whole, and it's healthy for the district. And I also, you know, want to concur with what Paimon said. We do have an authority and responsibility to the 15,000 youth in this city and all the systems that govern those youth. And so it just speaks to the balancing in systems that has occurred here tonight that are the same systems and balancing that happened from Washington DC to Trenton to locally. So thank you guys for coming out, and looking forward for you. I know you came out to every meeting, and it's a very extensive four-hour meeting, however, looking forward to the next time that you'll be visiting us. Thank you.
And real quick, before Ms. Wilson and others jump in, I want to piggyback on Ms. Raismore, and I didn't say this specifically, but just a huge, huge, huge thanks to every parent who came, because sometimes this environment can be difficult, and a lot of you were nervous when you were up there. And just thank you, whether you're a district, charter, Renaissance school parent, thank you so much for coming.
Okay, Ms. Blackshear?
Guess I shouldn't say anything, but I have to say it. I'm trying to get the right words to say, because I don't like offending anybody, but I do need to say that if we sometimes treat each other like we want to be treated, we'll get a lot further than where we're at now. The reason I say that is because I too have fought systems and did some of the things that I needed to do, but always did it in a respectful manner, because I want people to respect me and what I have to say, as well as I respect them for what they have to say. I'll listen to you better if you come to me and we're able to dialogue, but when someone is yelling at me and carrying on, and it just shuts me down. It really does. And I don't want that, I don't want to shut down when people have their concerns and issues. But if you come to me and you talk to me and we discuss what our differences are and whatever, trust me, I'll buy into that quicker, and the majority of people know me, I will buy into something and help fight for it, but not if you're hollering and yelling at me, because my defenses go up, just like your defense. If I walked up to anybody in that audience, you'll say that I lost my mind if I walked up to you, start hooping and hollering and screaming at you. I'm not paid to sit up here, and I know a lot of y'all don't want me up here, but in my heart, I have done some things to change some things. I don't have to list them or whatever. God knows what I've done. But all I got to say is this here, is you don't have to respect me as a person, but as a human being, because that's how I respect you, as a human being. And after saying all of that, you know, I do wish everyone a happy holiday and stuff, but that's how I feel in my heart.
Thank you, Ms. Blackshear.
Anyone else?
Ms. Burley?
I don't know. I just, I just hope this don't come out the wrong way. You know, very solemn, I have a lot to say, but this board fights hard behind closed doors that people don't know nothing about. We go home angry at each other sometime, but we fighting for all 1,500,000 kids that's in this district. And I feel offended, and I tell everybody, I feel offended for you to come here and attack me and say what I don't do, because you don't know what I don't do. Ask me, I'll tell you. I have no promise telling you that. And I also feel offended that you come here and accuse and bring me some crackers to eat. I don't know whether this is the right setting for that, but I feel offended about that. Minister Yacine, I stand behind you. I don't know how true what they saying, but I could not go home and rest in peace knowing that they attacked you like that, because when they attacked you, they attacked every board member on this, every member of this board. And we here to fight, and we're going to continue to fight. I've been fighting for 74, I've been in this city for 74 years, and I've been in education for at least 50 of them. And I will continue to fight for our kids and everybody that stands on this board. And Superintendent, I don't like when they offend you and the rest of your staff, but you can tell by your report that we do a lot of in-house fighting, and we're doing a good job, because the records speak for themselves. You can't change the records. And I just hope everybody have a Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
Minister Yacine?
I just want to say thank you very much. I appreciate that, Ms. Burley and the rest of the board, and it's an honor to serve with each and every one of you who are professionals here. We have professional business persons, professional advocates, family members, and former educators. It's been an honor to serve with you, and I appreciate you, that I too. You know, we don't get offended, this is why we do the work that we do, to raise the consciousness of our people and show them better than we can tell them. So I appreciate, you know, your response. And to Mr. Francis, I think I believe and I agree with you wholeheartedly, Superintendent, but I think Mr. Francis, the point he was trying to make, if I may, to say that, you know, if they're going to be here advocating, that they should advocate where they're at first as well. But I'm glad you shared with him that their system of advocacy is a little different, and you are the superintendent, not only of the public schools, but all schools here in Camden that represents the state of New Jersey. So I think that we open it to all to come as well, too. But the point, and to the gentleman who spoke again from Trenton, I want to say too publicly what I said to him walking out last time, that I appreciate the information that he was bringing from Trenton, that I was just trying to make the point, I believe Mr. Francis was making, is that, you know, I wouldn't be caught in other districts speaking offensively against other people in other districts, that the school systems I don't live in. I don't think that we should allow others, we shouldn't behave that way, because behavior means everything, good manners means everything, but if we shouldn't or would not like to do that in other people's community, that we should let other people do it in our community. And that's the only point that we were making, but we don't use baby language in that kind of language.
I'll say that.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Yacine. Again, thank you for the way you held and conducted yourself through the attack this evening. You're not the first, you won't be the last. The bottom line is, is that we're here, working on behalf of our students, doesn't matter what school they're in, whether it is Mastery, Uncommon, Camden Public Schools, all of the students are our children. That's how we look at it, and that's how we function. Again, I'm going to say to you that tonight, if you go home and take the time and you read the superintendent's report, come back here and tell me next month that you didn't see a difference in what is going on in this district. This proves what you saw today with the numbers and the percentages that are beginning to go up. It doesn't happen overnight. We didn't get in the position we're in overnight, it's not going to come out overnight. But the reality is, is you have people at the table who are working together on behalf of your children as well as ours. Our children, my children all went to public schools. I went to Hatch and Camden High. My husband and I, my family, I believe that we're good upstanding citizens in this city, just like I believe that you and yours can be. So I'm going to say this to you. I don't want any less for your children than I want for mine. I said to Paimon that my concern was, two years ago, exactly around the same timeframe, I'm concerned about the direction that I'm beginning to see things go in this city, dealing with education. We've always been in agreement and working together, never dividing and separating, where if we are the adults and we can't come together and talk together, how do we expect our children to be in the schools and come together and work together? We lead by example. That's what we're here for. So when we do what we did here tonight, that is a black eye on all of us, because remember, the TV station is here for a reason. We fought hard to have that television station put in place so that we can keep our parents and our community informed, not just about a board meeting, it's also about teaching and learning our community and our parents about programs in this district. You might not be seeing it at the level that it had been, but we're moving on it and putting things back in place. Before Paimon could come in and build anything up, we had to do assessments, things had to be torn down. Now you're beginning to see things on the rise. That's what tonight was about. That's what we need to look at and say, we are now moving in the right direction. And I'm going to say this, Mr. Brown, I'm not sure where you are, but I know you will hear me. The bottom line, and you talked about last month, nobody was concerned about parents being able to travel, let me say this to you. As a board member or as a parent, because I have been both, and I will continue to be, as well as a grandmother and a great, the reality is this, there's funding that comes into this school district that requires certain things to take place. Be glad you have parents that were willing to take their time to go and learn what the state and federal law calls for, so that the funding can continue to come into this district, because without it, our tax dollars cannot educate our children. You know that as well as I do. So don't stand and act as if you're ignorant, because you've been on this board, but if you didn't learn it, then that's on you. Maybe that's why you're walking and we're still sitting here, because you can't make changes unless you are informed. If you don't know what's going on, then maybe you should ask somebody. It is not for us to come here and scold you, we're here to help you. You have a phone number to reach every one of us. You can go right through the district. My personal phone number is out there, just like everyone else's.
Emails?
Our emails, our website, you can reach us. We don't have to come here and function like this. Our children are watching us. We can't continue to do this, because how do we tend to bring them in line to teach them to do what we need to do? We can't do that. Partnerships, we're fighting, and we're getting partnerships built in this district, because of the staff that's going out here and they're dealing with corporations. I hear you say, oh, well, we're bringing in corporations through the mayor. The mayor isn't bringing the corporations in for the board. This is educational, and that is what helps our children to grow. I'm talking to the president of a college this morning, talking about the programs that can come into this district, help our children, that when they walk out of this district, they can go into college credits already there. So we're trying to find a process now to put things in place, so that we can make those things available to you and your children, educate you on that. We don't sit here and get paid a penny. It costs us to come here. No one gives us gas to come here, buys clothes to sit here.
Babysitters.
Give us food. We're here because we care.
That's right.
That's why. So for anyone who sits here with our feet under the table, we're not here to try to distress you, distress your children, we're here to work together on behalf of our children and our families in the city of Camden. And I truly ask you to come on board and be a part of this as this generation begins to make change, because that's what we're going to do. Paimon Rahanaford, I want to say thank you. You came in here, we looked at you, and we said, it's like looking at one of the kids. And I can say to him that I remember the first day that he went out, on the first day of school, and he said to the children, I'm your new superintendent. Do you know what a superintendent does? And I watched a kindergarten student take a stab at it, and he was correct. And then I watched junior high and senior students would just look at him and not say, because they didn't know what to expect. So that's a little bit like what we had to deal with, the same thing. Until we become unified as one, we can't make that change. But I can tell you this, that I walk each and every day by faith and not by sight. I don't worry about anything someone else has to say to me about me and mine, because the reality is, I know who I am, and I know what we're here for. And with that, we're going to continue to walk in faith and not by sight, and in strength, and we are hoping that you will join in with us.
Amen.
At this time, I would like to say thank you to each and every one sitting here at the table, and I'd like to say happy holidays and season's greetings to all. God bless.
Motion to close?
Motion to close, second.
Second.
Okay, roll call. Mr. Reese Atwood?
Yes.
Ms. Catherine Blackshear?
No.
Yes.
What? That's a first.
Ms. Dorothy Burley?
Yes.
Ms. Tahisha Manier?
Yes.
Mr. Yacine Muhammad?
Yes.
Felicia Reyes Morton?
Yes, ma'am.
And Ms. Martha Wilson?
Yes.
Thank you.
Right. Yes. Thank you.